All right, good evening. We're going to call to order the September 24th meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is Mayor's Minutes and Council Comments. Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about?
I'd go ahead.
Well, it's probably the same thing if I had to guess. I was just going to say a big thank you to the police, the fire department, particularly Public Works, for the work they did this past weekend, working downtown. I could see them done here Thursday and especially Friday morning, getting everything ready. And when I came to work on Monday, you wouldn't have known that there was tens of thousands of people in downtown Bristol. They did an excellent job getting city...
Was that... Okay. Well, I don't have anything to add, you know, over and above, just like Bill said, with Rhythm and Roots. It looks like it was very well attended, our police, fire, transit, Public Works, and Bristol, Tennessee's equivalent departments all did an amazing job. And 2020 is the 20th anniversary for Rhythm and Roots, and I am certainly looking forward to that. I know it's going to be, probably going to be a little bit hotter because it's a week earlier, but we'll make it through, and I'm looking forward to it. So, next item is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items, and we have one person for non-agenda, and that's Nancy Marney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I have been asked a number of times in the last two weeks, really in the last one week, the most recent time being today, I've been asked a question that I think should be clarified before this agenda starts tonight, and this is the question. People, or the statement, it isn't a question, it's a statement. There seems to be a misconception among too many people that the, that if this property in question tonight is rezoned to B3, and if there is a la... No, let me, I sound like a babbling fool. I had a tooth pull, that's what did it. If this property is rezoned to B3, everything that the city code allows within the B3 zone may or can be put into this area. Now, here is where the confusion comes in. There are a lot of people who don't understand that that same list of items that are permitted will be acceptable in any B3 zone. It makes no difference where that B3 zone is within this city. If you all change it to a B3 zone, the B3 zone is already in place. It allows anything, but if you allow something in this area that doesn't exist in another B3, somebody may say, hey, I'm going to put that over here, and it may be very undesirable. Remember my example from two or three weeks ago about the man who wanted to build four or $500,000 house and asked me where to put it? And I said, well, I don't have any idea. They've played around with the zones so much, I couldn't begin to tell you where, but I'll tell you this, you may build a $500,000 or $600,000 house right now, and then next year you'll look at, and your next-door neighbor will be a filling station on one side and a U-HOP on the other because of the zoning. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr., do you want to address that, her question about B3 allowances now, or...
Sure.
Okay.
In regards to the B3 allowance, wherever B3 is located within the city, those businesses are listed before you can locate there. Now, in regards to the RV park specifically, there are certain restrictions where it has to meet certain... There's certain restrictions that have to be met in regards to the amount of acreage for that RV park. So, a lot of, there's a lot of sites in the city that would not apply to, I'm not sure why it's not working, but there are a lot of sites within the city where an RV park would not work based on the current ordinance that's in the code section right now.
May I add one comment? After having listened to these things for about 40 years and being a former member of the planning division, that is what we dealt with, anybody wanting to do it in any other.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to the regular agenda. Item one is first reading of ordinance to amend the city zoning map for request ZMA 01-2019 from Long Crescent LLC for tax map 221A2, 221A3, and 2616A. Before we get into the staff report, I'm just going to remind anybody who may not have been here previously, if you're signed up for public comment, it's three minutes. The light will come on at three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, it'll go yellow, and when you run out of time, it'll go red. So, again, I appreciate everyone coming out and their willingness to be here and be interested and be involved, so we'll get into it with the staff report first.
All right. Before they get started, I'm going to go into full disclosure that Long Crescent LLC is made up of members of my immediate family. I will not have any comments, votes, or have anything to say about this rezoning. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Remind all the speakers to state their name and address when they come to speak, please.
If y'all could do that, whenever you come up, if you will state your name and where you live, we would appreciate it. And then, staff report.
Mayor and council members, I think you know this is about the application that was received in July by our office for a map amendment on three tracts of land along Long Crescent Road owned by Long Crescent LLC. The request is to rezone from R1A, which is a single-family residential, to B3 intermediate business. The property is currently undeveloped, and the applicant property owner is proposing a campground and RV park which comes under the term of overnight recreational development. The desired use of the property is only allowed by right in a B3 or an A district, zoning district. As required by law, by city, by state code, a joint public hearing was held on September 10th with the Planning Commission and the City Council. The city staff has followed the state code requirements and considering the request and prepared a staff report recommending approval of the request. This staff report was presented with a fairly lengthy presentation and giving reasons for that recommended approval. At the September 16th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission considered the request, they heard additional comments from the public, and they voted to not accept the staff recommendation, and therefore, they are sending to you their recommendation for denial of the request to City Council. And you, as a City Council, can vote to accept the Planning Commission recommendation, denying the zoning map amendment application, or approve the rezoning request. If it is approved, there would need to be two readings because a zoning map is the same as an ordinance change. I'll conclude my comments on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan. Next, next part of this is public comment, and we've got a few people signed up. First person is Rachel Gibson.
Hi, my name is Rachel Gibson. I live at 78 Clover Lane, Bristol, Virginia. After hearing neighboring residents concerned, traffic safety was near the top of the list. This is a road that I estimate 1% to 2% of Bristol residents use. I would suggest that there is more of a percentage of residents that walk up and down Lee Highway daily, where sidewalks are tremendously needed for safety. For a city that is bearing the poor investment decision of the false development and still trying to get back on its feet, I would presume that there is not a whole lot of funding for schools, jail, the golf course, the landfill, the debt, and the list could go on. My point is that being the city, that being in this city, the funds are limited. Unless a casino comes, I would say that funding to fix the existing traffic conditions that affect a small percentage of residents would be hard to find. The only way that I can see any work being done to this road anytime soon is by getting it funded through VDOT. And I'm willing to go out on a limb and say that VDOT will not put forward any funding until data and circumstance deem it necessary. An RV park on this road would certainly help show growth and road usage needed for potential state funding. I also would like to address the concerns about sewage. We have talked to BVU, and it appears that getting sewage to the proposed property will not pose any issue. They suggest that it can be extended from the Lee Highway side of Long Crescent and ran along the interstate, which would not pose any conflicts with resident-owned property on Long Crescent. There has been zero interest in this property's development for at least 30 years, proving that it's not suited for residential use. As is, the property is not adequately zoned. Interstate visible land always has been and always will be prime property for business use, not residential. To quote David McGee in Sunday's paper, "According to a Pew Research study on government incentives for business, the city should consider locally-owned businesses with carryover effects for complementary businesses, as well as those businesses that export products rather than competing with businesses already in place." Here we are, Long Crescent LLC, it's locally owned, wanting to bring in a development that has great potential for complementary businesses in this area with no direct competition, and to top it off, we don't want any incentives. Zero money has been asked from this city and from local utility providers. If council decides to approve Planning Commission's recommendation, Long Crescent LLC would like to ask for you to consider an exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person up is Larry Kirksey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, members of staff, Planning Commission. My name is Larry Kirksey. My wife and I live at 28 Trail Road here in Bristol, Virginia. We are lifelong residents of Bristol, Virginia. It's a pleasure to be here. I thank you all, each of you, for your time and attention that you've given to this discussion since it arose in the last 30 days. I'm very grateful for the time that's been expended by Ms. Morgan and Mr. Poe as well in, in their efforts to, to look the situation over from a planning perspective. With all due respect, I take issue with that report. I will not belabor that. They know the issues that have been taken with their report, both factually as well as on opinion basis, and I'm very grateful, though, for their time they've expended. You all have heard from any number of comments, both at the public hearing as well as at the Planning Commission meeting, where your Planning Commission voted unanimously to decline and to, a recommendation to decline this rezoning, which should carry some weight to you, I would think. But you've heard the comments of a number of people, myself and others who are present here tonight. There's a great number of people who've not addressed this podium, for one reason or another, have not come forward to, to speak to you in this fashion, but they have spoken to you in other fashions, through social media and the like as well. My only purpose here tonight is to reiterate what I've said before with the opposition that is there. It's a factual opposition. These are not folks that are nimby's, not in my backyard. These are bona fide, valued residents of, of the Bristol community, as is Ms. Gibson. She is a valued resident of this community as well, and I certainly recognize that. But at the same time, these folks that have spoken in opposition say so from the heart, they say so from the head with validity and with credibility as well. I will tell you that I have been asked to pass to you, and I've just, again, received some additional signatures tonight, a petition, and it's not your stereotypical petition, it just, it doesn't say we oppose. It says, we oppose and here's why. And there's a list of 10 items that are listed to you for why these individuals have signed it. These individuals number 300 approximately, give or take, that have signed this petition. I pass this up to you, Mr. Mayor. I also pass to each of the council members and staff members just a copy of the petition as well, only one copy, the original copy of the petition. We request, or I request to you, my wife and I, that you please, with all due respect, deny this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Pam Kerr.
I was trying to decide whether to say anything tonight or not. I'm Pam Kerr at 423 Santa Monica Road, Bristol, Virginia. There's a couple of things I'd like to address. The fact that it has been stated there was no interest in the last 30 years in that land. There's been much interest in the land. My husband tried to buy it, but at that point, it was ridiculously expensive. I think Ms. Wilson was there when it had dropped to $400,000. Now, if I had been aware it was $114,000, I would have bought it, but I wasn't aware. But my husband wanted to buy it, but the city was asking so much money years ago that he did not. And I wanted to clarify that, that that, people have looked at the land, but the fact that whatever went into bankruptcy or whatever is the key, $114,000 is still for that land because he was asked to hold a lot more than that. The other thing, when you're talking about how many people travel up and down, I'm wondering who stands there and has a meter or whatever to read how many people use that road. I mean, we're doing by hearsay here. It was stated in the paper that was read that 10 people a day from the community use it, and that when we got 74 RVs, it would go down to five people using it a day. I will beg to differ you. I bet any day of the week, anybody here would differ with that. I use it, not that many times by myself, but I use it a lot, and I'm one person. So, those are the things. I'm very disappointed that we're even considering this. I doubt we would have built on the top of this hill and put the kind of money we put into our house had we known this was, could come down the road. And my husband did try to buy it, but the city was asking a tremendous amount of money at that time for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Ken Hale.
Good evening. I'm Ken Hale. My office is at 416 State Street, Bristol, Tennessee. I represent nine property owners and would respectfully request a slight extension of time because of that. City staff, Planning Commission, or Planning Office, thank you for your hard work on this. I know it's not easy. Big shout out and thank you to both cities for a beautiful event this weekend, and we need more events like that. The Planning Commission voted to reject the request for this rezon, and I want to run over quickly some, some points that I wish to make. Wingards purchased this property in August of 2018. At the time they purchased it, they were certainly aware that this was R1A property. After, at the time they purchased it, they had expressed that their intent that they were going to put a, an RV park on this property. At that time, there were no RV regulations for the city. They're asking for an eight-step downward departure from R1A to B3, one step above Lake Industrial, creating a, a B3 in the midst of an R1A. This is a permanent change. The first we've heard of the request for an exemption or exception was tonight. This opens up 43 categories of uses for this property. Not 43 different uses, 43 categories of uses. Everything from auto sales, hotels, motels, onsite manufacturing premises. Someone could open a small factory on that property or a large factory. Places of amusement, clubs, clinics, question is, is it a methadone clinic? No one wants those in your backyard. Car lots, body piercing, tattoo shops, and schools teaching that, as well as body piercing and tattoo schools. It is short-sighted to look at this use here today. You've got to look as stewards of this city, you've got to look five years from now, 10 years from now, 30 years from now, 50 years from now, not today's particular use because we don't know if this is going to go through. The owner, previous owner of this property said that the cost for him, and he looked into this in the 1980s, the cost in the 1980s was $1 million for the sewer line alone. Very expensive. Sewer is, and this is the first we've heard about BVU getting involved. Prior to this, we've been told that it was private from front to back and would be required to go through private property. There are no owners going to sell them or give them an easement for this for a sewer line. None of the adjacent or one removed property owners are in favor of this. Talk about a buffer zone, there's no way to buffer this property for the Waldrons and Miss Traitor. Think about the visual appearance of this campground as you pull onto 381 going south. It's not something that we want to see.
If you could get like a minute and a half more.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've talked about the roadway issues. One of the things I want to talk to you about is the campground regulations themselves, they are very, very, very loose. I worked on three different campground cases in my career. Go look at South Holston Lake, go look at Boone Lake. These regulations will not prevent the things that you see out there. Accessory uses are not clearly defined. You'll end up with outbuildings, you'll end up with camper covers, decks, porches, add-ons to the campers. You name it, it's going to be there. It's not tight enough to tighten this up. There have been no studies performed whatsoever to discuss diminution in surrounding property values. In order to do that, it requires an extensive study with current use, projected future use, market studies, impact studies, and there is no evidence on the table from anyone that this has been done. And again, you're charged with the stewardship of this city. You're being asked to create a substantial intrusion on the peaceful use of these people's property rights. This is disruption of a longstanding R1A stable community. And based on that, we request that you adopt the restriction or the, the decision of the Property Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Mike Dishman.
Counsel, my name is Mike Dishman. I'm a resident of Bristol, Virginia, residing at 400 Bel Air Lane at the corner of Bel Air and Long Crescent Road. About three weeks ago, as many of the folks here and many of my neighbors did also, I received a flyer in my mailbox without postage, but immediately saw problems with that flyer. It was apparent that it was short on facts on which to base a conclusion about the appropriateness of this rezoning. It was, the flyer omitted the location of the 19 acres. I quickly deduced that it was, had to be near Woodman of the World since it was 19 acres. Assuming that that was the location, I was suspicious of the other assertions in the flyer. Finally, the flyer was clearly trying to smear the character of Councilman Kevin Wingard, who I know casually through my neighborhood, without any evidence. I think the effect of the flyer was to, of course, sway public opinion led directly, I believe, to the Planning Commission denying, without a stated basis, by the way, the rezoning request. But I decided to do a little research, talk to some people, try to make up my own mind, and so here's some facts that I was able to discover. The City Council adopted, I think perhaps unanimously, earlier this year, an updated and revised comprehensive plan that shows the proposed RV park as regional commercial, end quote. Clearly, it was City Council's intent at that time to rezone these tracts for business purposes. Secondly, the rezoning, I've learned, will not diminish any property values anywhere based on the opinion of a professional Realtor, real estate appraiser with a knowledge and experience in Bristol. Thirdly, the city has determined that the RV park will not impact the current level of traffic in any residential neighborhood. Further, it is highly doubtful RV park customers would, would do this, but just in case, the city would place signage to prevent traffic leaving the park from turning left or west onto Long Crescent. Finally, it's also very unlikely any users of the park would choose to enter from Virginia Heights instead of exit five in Lee Highway. Fourth, due to the maintenance of a significantly, the proposed maintenance of a significantly wide natural barrier and the large difference in elevation between the RV park and the adjacent residential property, the park will not impact those residents, especially considering that they're already, the two houses there are already overlooking the interstate and, and this property that's grown up. Fifth, BVU has an existing sewer, I've learned, that can be extended...
You could wrap it up if you could.
Oh, I'm sorry. It can be extended along public right-of-way without crossing any easements of property. Kevin Wingard has not spoken in private or in public to try to influence the city or any staff or council members on this project. The RV park would increase city tax revenue. The existing property is a blight and an embarrassment to the city. Please consider these facts and approve the request. Thank you.
All right. Next person is Bill Bass. You going to pass? Okay. All righty. Thank you. All right. So, looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, based on the recommendation from the Planning Commission and the preponderance of the comments we've heard, I would make a motion that we deny this request to rezone this parcel of land.
All right. We have a motion and looking for a second.
Second.
All right. Motion to reject is made by Mr. Hartley and second by Mr. Mumpower. Open it up for discussion.
I just want to make sure for clarity of protocol here that the vote of yes, what it means, and the vote of no, what that means, because we do have a denial recommendation from the Planning Commission.
The motion was to deny the request to rezon, so if you vote yes, that means the rezoning would not occur.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Abstain.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
So, we don't need to read the ordinance, and so we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right. We're back. So, item two on the agenda is approval of performance contract between Highlands Community Services and the City of Bristol, Virginia. Staff report.
Counsel, let me, two seconds here. I was already on item three. Counsel, this is the contract between the Highlands Community Service Board and the City of Bristol, Virginia. This is a contract that's signed every year between the localities within Highlands Community CSB. I... CSB, and basically it just states what they perform for us as a city and the citizens of Bristol, Virginia. And our portion total is 165,000 is what we have budgeted for this current contract year.
All right, thank you. No one has signed up for public comment, so I am looking for a motion and a second on this item.
I would move that we approve the performance contract with Highlands Community Service.
Second.
All right, so motion to approve is made by the vice mayor and second by Mr. Farnham. Counsel discussion.
As the council representative, I would just say I appreciate everything Highlands Community Service does. They do a lot. A lot of the issues our city faces around behavioral health, addiction, drug court, things like that, they provide a lot of services that ultimately, by them providing those services, save us money down the road. So they do a great job for both the City of Bristol and Washington County.
I would agree with you. I'm on the CPMT board for Highlands, and that's a board that deals with some pretty bad stuff and some pretty bad situations. Those people are very committed to what they do, and it's a good service that hopefully no one has to use ever, but it's a good service to be there, and I like the work they do.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Item three, approval for city manager to sign deeds transferring property to BVU authority as required by Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-7210, staff report.
Counsel, you can see a map here of the dots that are noted in red. Those are properties that have been presented to you all in regards to transferring out of the city name into Bristol, Virginia Utility Authority name. These are properties where substations or water towers are located that BVU uses on a daily basis and serves their customers with. In 2010, with the passage of the BVU Authority Act, Title 15.2-7210, states that, it's titled "Transfer of Properties in Debt," and it states by the General Assembly, "All the properties, infrastructure, and other assets used by Bristol, Virginia Utilities for any of its utility services or otherwise, whether held in its name or in the name of the City of Bristol, Virginia, are hereby transferred to the authority and declared to be held by the authority as its property." This has come up in regards to the contractual negotiations with TVA and Genco and BVU, and part of this requirement is that these properties be transferred, or BVU is requesting these properties be transferred into their name. If these properties are not transferred into BVU's name, we're unsure if BVU will continue moving forward in regards to helping complete this four-party transaction that is in the process of occurring. And Genco would like these properties transferred so that they could consummate their deal with the Tennessee Valley Authority by September the 30th. I've sent individual pictures of those properties to you all today, overhead view. There were five properties that I had questions about, and BVU has answered what they are going to do with that. The questions I had were property that's adjacent to Aris and American Merchant. Currently, there are sewer line easements, power line easements, water line easements. A new substation would go there. If Aris returns to manufacturing or American Merchant, Max is out its load. The site on Campground Road has a TVA easement, BVU easement, two BVU easements, a driveway, Appalachia Power easement, a lease to Sunset Digital, and construction access point for oversized Transformers. If it is, in the future, it's set to be used for distribution line to the Valley Substation or from Valley. Cook Property, that's an easement of a 12-inch water line right now. It would be used to construct a new 1 million gallon water tank to replace Bristol View and Carter Street. Construction would occur in the next five to 10 years. Fairview Street, that would be to build a road and clear right-of-ways to allow for the increase of sewage lines in regards to the $32 million consent order. Harlow Street would be a proposed new location of a water tank. And then the Lloyd Property, which is at Spring Circle, that's a buffer for Hassan Heights Tank, and it would be a second access point to that tank.
All right, we have no one signed up for public comment on this, so looking for a motion and a second.
I move that we approve that the city manager is able to sign the deeds transferring the property to BVU authority.
I've got a motion and looking for a second.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion from Mr. Farnham and second from Mr. Hartley. Counsel discussion.
Well, I'll just make a comment that, in my opinion, we should not take on any new BVU action until open pending issues are resolved between the city and BVU pending the opt-in at transfer of the closure of that transaction. So the city needs to close one business deal with BVU before they take on other contractual arrangements. So one step at a time.
Is there anything else? Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
No.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Item four, appointment to the planning commission. What is the pleasure, counsel?
I move that we appoint Michael Braswell to the planning commission.
All right, so we have a nomination for Mr. Braswell, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so...
Can you specify that that is for a term ending June 30th, 2020?
Yes.
This is for a term ending June 30th, 2020, caused by the resignation of Mr. Buchanan. All right, so nominations, Mr. Braswell to serve through June of 2020. Nominations from Mr. Farnham, second is from Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Abstain.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, so on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion and a second.
Move we approve the consent agenda as approved, as presented.
A second.
All right, so motion from Mr. Hartley and second from Mr. Farnham, and if the clerk would call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item C is a closed session. Do we have a motion to table that?
I make a motion to table the closed session.
A second.
All right, motion was Mr. Farnham and was second. Was that you? Second is Mr. Mumpower, and clerk would call the roll on that.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
City manager's comments. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
No comments.
All right, we stand adjourned.